Okay, I'm waiting for the thumbs up that says. Okay, we are streaming.
All right, great. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. This is the Clean Energy Alliance Board of Directors Adjourned Regular Meeting. It's January 13th, 2022 at 2:00 PM. We're meeting virtually in the city of Solana Beach. And Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Certainly. Member Jerker?
Here.
Member Insta?
Here.
Member Musgrove?
Yes.
Member Acosta?
I'm here.
And Chair Becker?
Present.
Thank you.
All right. And do we have the flag today? We can put up on our screen?
We do.
All right. And I will go ahead and lead since we're virtually in Solana Beach. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I didn't notice the Clean Energy Alliance running banner at the bottom. Is that something new? Or was... Always doing something new. All right. Do we have any board comments or announcements? I think we have one. We have somebody new today. Yes, Board Member Acosta.
Yes, hi, everybody. My name's Teresa Acosta. I've been your alternate on the Clean Energy Alliance for all of last year. But just on Tuesday this week, I received the post of your primary representative, so I'll be attending these meetings. I'm so excited about it. Sustainability is one of my biggest priorities, even in running for City Council. So it's one of the things I work on a lot in a lot of different areas. I drive electric. I've got solar on my house. I compost. You know, I do all the things, the little things that you can do in your own household. But in these, these roles, government roles, you can do even more for a larger area. So I'm so excited to be a part of this, and thank you for the warm welcome, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Yes, welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome aboard. So Delmar, have you guys finalized your picks for the year?
Yes. Yes, they are, and they just remain the same.
Okay, perfect. And we did ours as well, so everything should be good with everybody else, too. I'm assuming since you, the new people were just assigned as well. All right, perfect. Very good. And I do not see any presentations or public comment at this time. Is that correct? Okay, you were on mute, but I saw you say yes. All right, we are on to our new business. And item number one is consideration of adopting, approving a credit agreement amendment and fee agreement with JP Morgan. Oh, I see some hands. Board Member Jerker?
Yes, so I need to recuse myself from this discussion. As the company I work with trades on has a very deep financial relationship with JP Morgan Chase. So I will stop my video, be on mute, and when the discussion is done, I will rejoin.
All right, perfect. All right. And Board Member Warden?
Yeah, I'm the second domino that's going to fall. On the advice of counsel, I'm going to recuse as well. I do have some shares of stock in JP Morgan, so I will be shutting off my camera and muting and be back later. So thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, Madam CEO, can I have you take this away?
Yes, thank you, Chair Becker and board members. I have a presentation that I will be going through that provides the details of the board's actions that are under consideration. We do have with us our legal team that assisted with this process and the negotiations with JP Morgan, including Lindsay Thorson, our general counsel, and from her office, we have Diana Schwang. And she has, brings with her an expertise in financing and credit facilities. And so she was also instrumental in getting us to this point and can answer any technical questions the board may have with regards to the agreements. So with that, I will jump over to my presentation. So the board is being asked to consider two actions. A staff recommendation is that the board adopt Resolution 2022-001, approving credit, the credit agreement amendment with JP Morgan in a form substantially attached to the staff report that increases the line of credit from six million dollar level to 15 million and authorizes the chief executive officer to execute all documents subject to the special and general counsel approval. And the second action is to approve the related fee agreement with JP Morgan and authorize the CEO to execute those documents again, subject to special and general counsel approval. And some background, at the January 21st, 2021 regular meeting, the Clean Energy Alliance Board approved our initial credit agreement with JP Morgan. JP Morgan was selected through a competitive process. We did an RFP process, which JP Morgan responded to and was determined to be the best respondent and was awarded, selected to provide our credit facility. The initial line of credit was $6 million, the purpose of which was to fund our initial startup costs and provide a cash flow. That credit line of credit requires repayment by January 31st of 2026. Since that initial approval, power supply costs have exceeded estimates due to current market conditions. There's been significant constraints in the near, in the short term with regards to supply. The drought has affected hydroelectric supply. We've had delays in new renewable facilities coming online, and those have resulted in increasing prices beyond what we had expected for our initial procurements. It has driven our need to request an increase in our line of credit. At its last meeting, the board did adjust its rates and brought those rates in line with providing sufficient revenue in the long term. So when we look out into future fiscal years, the revenue generated by the rates the board just adopted are sufficient to cover our costs. So our shortfall really is in finishing out this current fiscal year. In future fiscal years, there is sufficient revenue based on contracts that we've entered into and that we're seeing for in future years. So related to the shortfall, we reached out to JP Morgan and initiated conversations with regards to an increase in our line of credit. JP Morgan had reviewed our existing agreement, reviewed our financial projections, and determined that and went to their credit committee. The credit committee authorized an increase to $15 million, subject to amendments to existing terms and conditions of our agreement and adding some new terms. One thing that remains unchanged is the repayment date. So our facility still continues to be, that we must pay it in full by January 31st, 2026. I will note that we do make interest payments. We make quarterly interest payments on our facility, credit facility. In terms of the details of the terms under which JP Morgan has proposed the increase, include additional, adding additional quarterly and annual reporting requirements. So we do currently have some reporting requirement that we do on a monthly, quarterly, and annual basis. They've added some additional requests in those reports. They include reporting a debt service coverage ratio, which looks at what is the amount of our liquidity as opposed to the outstanding debt that we have, and we must meet 1.40 times ratio. We also, they've also asked that we provide days liquidity on hand, which looks at how much cash do we have available to finance our expenses and how many days do we have in the cupboard? They've also asked that we keep them up to date with regards to any changes in our annual budget. So, for example, if the board makes any changes to our, to our budget after adoption, then we must keep JP Morgan apprised of those changes. In terms of additional monthly reporting requirements, we will be required to provide a report that discloses our available liquidity. We would be requested to provide to them information on our restricted cash and also with regards to our supply hedge position. And I'll go into a little bit more detail about what that, what that is and what that means. The, another term that the JP Morgan was looking at was that we would need to provide to them within five business days, information regarding any rate changes, rate increases that are 5% or greater, and that included would be an updated financial projection so that they could see how that change in the rates affect our financial projection. With regards to the debt service coverage ratio, I mentioned that we must maintain 1.4 times. That test will start in the current agreement. The starting date of that test was to be June 30, 2022. That now is being pushed out to that requirement, testing requirement will begin the quarter ending June 30, 2023. If our, if our financials, if we don't meet the debt service coverage ratio, then the amendment allows for liquidity on hand to be substituted or cure the default. And that looks at we, for fiscal year 2223, that we have at least 30 days of expenses of liquidity cash on hand, and then we will have been considered to have met our debt service coverage ratio. For fiscal years after 2223, they would be looking to us to have 50 days of expenses in cash in the bank in order to have cured our, not meeting our debt service coverage ratio. There's also a requirement that states that we can only use a liquidity on hand test two times in any four consecutive quarters to address meeting the 1.4 times ratio. Another new term is that we would need to repay $5 million of any funds that we have drawn down from our line of credit by December 31st, 2023. So right now, we only make quarterly interest payments. This new term would require that we make a $5 million principal payment to pay off up to $5 million that we have outstanding. And after we've repaid it, and there's been a 30 days waiting period, we can re-borrow it again if the funds are needed. So with regards to the power supply hedge requirement, and I'll speak to that in a little more detail in terms of what that means. So in the energy procurement world, our largest, number one expense in our budget is our power supply costs. They, they'll range up to 90% of our annual costs and any, and so it's where we have the greatest risk, and it's driving our current need to increase our line of credit for the current fiscal year. In order to provide certainty in our budget and control those costs, we enter into contracts with suppliers for specific fixed quantities at a specific fixed cost or fixed rate. And by entering into these contracts that, that we have for fixed fees and fixed quantities, it provides certainty in our, in our costs. And this really addresses the question of, you know, are we going to run into the same problem next year? What's to prevent us from having the same issue? And really, how we manage our costs and manage, provide certainty that we will have sufficient revenue to cover our costs is through entering into these hedges. Our position is that for calendar year 2022, we have a minimum of our 80% forecasted energy needs locked into contracts right now at a fixed price. For calendar 2023, energy needs or energy demand, we have 60% of that in fixed price contracts. And then in 2024, we have 40%. JP Morgan agrees that that's a good strategy to give certainty in our costs. And what they are, have included as a term is that we take into account the energy demands for the expansion into Escondido and San Marcos. And that by the end of this year, that we have, meet these hedge positions inclusive of Escondido and San Marcos. We have not yet started procuring the energy we're going to need to serve those customers. We anticipate doing that in late April and May timeframe and with the goal to then achieve these hedge percentages by the end of the calendar year. And again, that gives us certainty, cost certainty for our forecast, our financial forecast. JP Morgan has also included a term that says that we'll have annual meetings with JP Morgan and Clean Energy Alliance staff and its technical consultants to review our, review and discuss more energy market conditions. And based on those meetings, they may require that these hedge positions roll forward. So as we near the end of calendar year 2022, depending on market conditions, they may require that we hit 80% of 2023 as we approach that calendar year. And then 2024 would be bumped to the 60% hedge position. There is flexibility in the term if the market conditions at the time as we approach those next years. If, if we demonstrate to JP Morgan that achieving those hedge positions would be adverse to our financial position, then there is the potential for JP Morgan not to meet those hedge positions. They had also, were looking to, in order to ensure we do have the sufficient revenue, they were looking to the board to adopt the new rates effective January 1st, 2022, which the board did do at its last meeting. Lastly, our initial, our current credit agreement interest is based on LIBOR index. That index has been discontinued and is no longer a, available with which to use for setting interest rates. And so they will be converting that to the secured overnight financing rate, also known as SOFR. So our document reflects converting the interest calculation from a LIBOR-based rate to SOFR-based rate. For purposes of determining the interest cost for, for this credit line of credit, the interest calculation is a, begins at 3.45%, and then it adds the SOFR rate and then plus 0.10%. So if we use the rate that was in effect on December 22nd, the SOFR one month rate was 0.05%, then that results in an interest rate calculation of 3.6%. And that's how they determine for each time we draw funds down out of our line of credit, they'll look at what's the SOFR rate on the date that we draw down the portion that we need and do this calculation, and that interest rate is applied for each draw. So each draw has its own interest rate and interest calculation based on the rates in effect on that date. We've had a great team that has been working with us to evaluate this increase in our credit facility. It's been staff, myself, and Marie Burkody, our chief financial treasurer. Also, our legal team from Richardson, Watson, and Gershon, Lindsay Thorson, and Diana Schwang. We also have Rudy Sallow, who is from Nixon Body and provides the exponential expertise from the legal perspective. And our consultants from Pacific Energy Advisors have all reviewed the terms very closely. We have analyzed the impacts of these terms on our financials as well as our anticipated permits related to the hedge position requirements and have determined that the terms are determined to be acceptable and achievable. CEA will be in a position to meet all of these terms and meet the requirements that JP Morgan has laid out for this increase in our, in our credit line of credit. So in terms of what this facility will cost CEA through the end of January 31st, 2026, when we repay the balance, assuming we use 38%. So if we draw down 6 million, which we're very close to at this point, total costs, including fees, are just under 1.7. If we look interest only, the total us through January 31st, 2026 would be 1,667,000. The difference between the two are the fees that we pay JP Morgan for, for the increase in the credit facility as well as reimbursing JP Morgan their legal costs. If we use 50% of the 15 million, so our total draws are 7.5 million, those costs go up to total costs of 1.8 million, and interest only are 1.772 million. If we draw down all 10 million, costs are 2.250 million and interest only 2.220 million. With regards to the increase to 15 million, we do not anticipate needing 15 million. We actually are looking at needing just about $5 to $6 million through the end of this fiscal year. However, JP Morgan approached us with wanting to see us increase it to include a contingency fund or have cash reserves available to fund any unanticipated costs related to the expansion to Escondido and San Marcos. We don't, based on the analysis and working with Pacific Energy Advisors, we don't anticipate needing to draw down all of the 15 million. However, we have looked at our financials and our cash flow forecasts. And if there are anticipated costs, if we were to need to draw down the full 15 million, we would be in a position to repay all of the costs as well as the 15 million by the January 31st, 2026, based on revenues, our today's rates. And as I mentioned, the costs are related to the credit agreement amendment is, JP Morgan's fee is $10,000. We also reimburse JP Morgan their legal fees that are not to exceed amount of 20,000. We also have the costs related to our legal and technical team, which are estimated at 20,000, although based on what we've incurred to date, we will likely not be close to that amount, but that's a not to exceed amount. And again, we, based on the rates just adopted by the board, sufficient revenue will be generated to cover the financing costs, interest, and repayment per the terms of the credit agreement amendment. That does conclude my presentation. And again, we have, while Lindsay Thorson is here and available to answer questions, as is Diana Schwang, then our treasurer, Marie Burkody. We all stand here ready to answer questions that the board may have.
All right. Thank you very much for that presentation. I do see Board Member Insta has a question.
Yes, thank you so much, Chair Christie. Thank you so much for the presentation, Barbara. Again, being very, very new to all of this, I have some questions which might seem obvious to some of the others, but I did just want to clarify a couple of things. I'm really happy that we have, or that you have the fixed costs for power supply out over time. But then you did also mention that you would be getting the power supply numbers for Escondido and San Marcos in the spring. So if you could just elaborate on that, because hopefully that figures all into the cash that you will need from, from this extension.
Yes, thank you for that question. So the way that we approach procuring energy for our, that we need to then provide to our customers, we enter, we do regular monthly procurements of slices of what our needs are. And if you think about, you know, buying in the energy market, similar to how you would buy, you know, your financial advisor might talk about buying stocks. They'd say, you know, if you're going to, you're going to build a stock portfolio, you want to build, you want to do it methodically and over time. You want to buy a little bit over time because prices go up and down. Similar for the energy market, it's a commodity and the prices go up and down. And so we have been since this past February, as we were looking towards our initial launch, we began procuring our energy for the customers of Carlsbad, Del Mar, and Solana Beach. And we've been buying, we had to buy short-term, we had to buy energy for, you know, starting in May. But as you mentioned, we also have energy we've procured out into the future years. We haven't yet started including the energy that we're going to need for the customers in Escondido and San Marcos. And we will, will increase our amount of energy we're buying to include the providing service to those customers when we start our procurements in, in the, at the end of April, beginning of May timeframe.
Thank you so much, Barbara. I appreciate that. And then just to mention Vista and Oceanside, because I know we're looking a little further out, so I'm guessing the same would apply as they come onboard?
Yeah, so any further expansions that we have, any other new cities? We would likely be looking at, typically, spring is the best time to launch a community choice energy program in a community for Escondido and San Marcos. We're looking at an April 2023 service launch. So we would begin procuring the energy about a year ahead of that. So if Oceanside and Vista also join, there would be in 2024, likely probably April timeframe of 2024. And so we'd start procuring their energy a year ahead of that, so about April of 2023, exactly.
Thank you so much. Just really trying to understand all of this. It's a lot to take in. And of course, I just want to be sure that we are in a good place with the finances as they are being proposed today with this extension of the line of credit. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And can I just add a clarifying question for that, and then I'll go on to the other members? When you were talking about the short-term energy, and that would likely be much more expensive. So the fact that we'll start buying in April of 2022, a whole year ahead for Escondido and San Marcos, would that mean we wouldn't be getting necessarily the short term? We would be getting much more of a reasonable energy cost for the prices?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that question for clarification. Yes, that's exactly right. So when we were first getting brand new off the ground, we didn't begin procuring energy that we needed in May until February. So it was only a few, few months before. And typically, when you go out to the market, the closer in time you need the deliveries, typically, the prices are higher. But if you're buying out into the future, you can get it at a lower, at a lower price. And so we're actually able to buy the energy that we will be selling to Escondido and San Marcos. That is actually going to have a lower cost than the energy we had to buy initially for the, the initial first three founding members.
Right. Okay. Well, that's very good news. Thank you. All right. Board Member Acosta?
Yes, thank you.
It's Acosta. I'm going to get it right. Sorry.
It's okay. Everybody does it, and it's fine. I just try to remind people, it's like we live near the coast.
Of course. Acosta. Okay, okay.
Anyway, just a quick question. I, I know that we raised our rates, and I know that we were always working towards having that 2% better rate than SDGNE. Are we able to maintain that? Did they raise their rates also? Can you clarify for us?
Yeah, thank you for that. Yes, Sandy Agasso Electric is, is, you know, they're buying in the same market that we are in. So they did also have to increase their rates to reflect the costs that they're incurring related to procuring power. Their rates, generation rates did go up in January 1st. We were able to set, while we needed to increase our, we were able to maintain the 2% discount on just the generation portion, not the total bill, because we can't discount for delivery. But when you look at just the cost of the electricity, the generation portion for our clean impact product, which is our 50%, we do achieve that 2% savings.
Great. Thank you for clarifying.
All right. Board Member Musgrove?
Yeah, real quickly.
Yeah, real quickly, and this probably dovetails with the chair and for member ins goes questions, but the analysis that we came up with was that we would draw down approximately five million and JP Morgan recommended six. Was that to bridge any particular gap? And assuming we'll be paying interest on that additional million, and is it necessary to do that now?
Yeah, that question. When we started speaking with JP Morgan, they really wanted to look at this is is a a one time amendment. They they really would not like to see us come back again requesting for an increase. So the thought is let's set the line of credit at a level where we're confident that we would have available funds for any unanticipated costs related to the expansion. If we don't cut down, we do pay an undrawn fee. Uh, there is a slight, a small interest calculation for having those funds available. The I think between one and two percent. So it's not at the three point six percent. We only incur that interest rate for the amounts we actually draw down. But there is an interest calculation for the funds that are made available that we do not draw down. I would say it would be prudent for us to go ahead and amend the quantity, increase the line of credit up to the fifteen million and have those funds at our disposal should we need to draw them down. I would also like to add, I think it's important for the communities to know that, you know, this debt is not a debt of the cities, our member cities. It is a debt of Clean Energy Alliance. If Clean Energy Alliance in any way doesn't meet its obligations or in any way defaults, which we don't anticipate. But if worst case scenario, they did, there'd be no recourse to our our member cities. Our member cities are not on the hook for this debt. It is solely a debt of Clean Energy Alliance.
Right. Was that it? Board Member Busgrove?
Yeah, I'm just a little confused as to maybe I should ask the question, if if we asked for five and they suggested six, is there a limit to how many times we can ask if we have a credit line, assuming we have a credit line out to fifteen? Or was this additional million on the first request to five?
So our initial line of credit that was authorized in January of twenty twenty one was six million. And we anticipate making the last draw and we won down all of that six million in January. And we still have, but looking through, when we look, project our cash flow between now and June thirtieth, we will have a shortfall, so we will need cash. We did go and request an increase of an additional six million, which would have brought us to twelve. They came back and said, let's make it fifteen and have a three million dollar cushion for the expansion in case there's any unanticipated costs related to the expansion. And so that's how we got fifteen million.
So this is a component of the overall request to expand to fifteen million?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, very good. And I know that you have, I think I saw this somewhere, but we have analyzed the fact and we will be able to pay the five million dollar payment twelve thirty one, twenty twenty three.
Yes, thank you. We've completed financial analysis and cash flow. That includes repaying that. It includes all of the interest calculations, including the undrawn fee as board member Musgrove was asking, you know, if we do we pay anything on this increased amount? We have that included in our cash flow and financials. And we have sufficient revenue to fund our reserves and to make our interest and those principal payments on time.
And does it make any sense that at some point to analyze whether or not we want to lower our reserves to pay off some of this? Or is that something that we would look at or not necessary?
Yeah, I think, you know, as we as we get through, you know, our first, we haven't yet gotten through our first full year of service. We'll achieve that in May. The board has an adopted policy that we set aside five percent revenue into an operational reserve. I think I would say, you know, staff would not recommend dipping into reserves point where we are not meeting that policy to repay the loan. You know, having, you know, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, our, you know, number one expense is our power supply costs and, you know, out of a hundred million dollar budget, it's, you know, almost ninety million. If, you know, if we have a fiber, you know, ten percent, you know, increase in that budgeted lineup, it's it's a pretty significant nineteen or nine million dollars potentially of, you know, additional costs. So having reserves is very important so that we don't have to then increase rates, right? Because that's our only ability to pay customer, pay for our bills is through our rates. Or if we have just temporary price spikes, we would want reserves to not have to then adjust rates. And so I would say it likely wouldn't be something we would recommend to the board. But we want to consider, as the board looks at our budget and considers, you know, how we if we have surplus funds, how we use those funds that could certainly be something that the board could request we look at is, you know, an early repayment. And it has been, we have seen CCAs who, all CCAs have incurred debt to get off the ground. And we have seen, you know, many of those CCAs repay those initial financings early. So that may be, you know, a direction the board goes as we are looking at our budget and looking at, you know, if we have net surplus and available funds, that could be a use that the board would could direct.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Otherwise, we can go to comments or I would entertain a motion. I don't see any. I will go ahead and move.
Excuse me.
Yes.
It looks, I'm sorry, it looks like we have a public comment from Mr. Rob Howard.
Thank you. I'm sorry, didn't ask about that. Very good.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Rob Howard, I'm an Oceanside resident and looking forward to pretty much every city in the county becoming a part of a community choice energy program. My question, and I may have missed it because we went through quite a bit, but due to the rapid pace of growth with other cities joining, is the funding or the line of credit adequate to make up for that? So you, because I heard, did hear a comment that they didn't want you coming back asking again, but I think it's a different situation if it's due to the fact that you're growing. Are you adequately financed to allow expansion and we're can cover that expansion? I'm pretty sure the answer is yes, but I'm really curious as to how you handle that with your current line of credit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Madam CEO, could you please respond to that?
Yes, thank you, Chair Becker. Yes, so that line of credit, a fifteen million dollars does include agency funds to have a funding source should we incur unexpected us with regards to expansion. So we have built that into this increase.
Unfortunately, today, your your wifi doesn't seem so good today, Barbara. But I think everyone's getting it, or is it just me? You're you're very blurry, but and Mr. Howard, if you're still there, I would really love it if you could go to your city council and advocate for them joining CEA. You probably already have, but.
Yeah, yes. I was just gonna say, I have been advocating for this since Sandy. They actually started back with the San Diego and when Solana Beach got in. The the reality is the investor owned utilities are moving away from the previous model. And this is a way to help residents with this process and their utility bill. So yes, I'm I'm bugging them on a regular.
Very good. All right. And did you get your question answered?
Yes, I did. I was pretty sure the answer was yes, but I just like to hear.
Yeah, very good question. Thank you so much for attending and and speaking today.
Thank you.
All right. Any more public comment?
We have no further requests.
No further requests. All right. With that, I'm willing and I'm convinced that this is the right move and I would be moving this recommendation, staff recommendation for item number one.
Second. Musgrove will second.
All right, very good. Call for the vote.
Thank you, Member Insco.
Aye.
Member Acosta.
Aye.
Member Musgrove.
Aye.
Chair Becker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much for that. All right, that's all we had. Now we are on to board member requests for future agenda items. I can think of one that we are without a vice chair, so we need to put that on our.
I just wanted to make one clarification on your recommendation because you had mentioned item one and just to clarify, the recommendation has two parts and that was both included in your motion.
It was. Yes, I was saying that, yes, I was just saying it was the first on the agenda. You're right. Yes, both both recommendations. Would you like me to read them in the the record or we're okay?
Yes, please. That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, I would move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty two dash zero zero one approving credit agreement amendment with JP Morgan in a form substantially as attached, increasing the line of credit from six million to fifteen million and authorize the chief executive officer to execute all documents subject to special and general counsel approval. And two, approve related fee agreement with JP Morgan and authorize the chief executive officer to execute all documents subject to special and general counsel approval.
One second.
Thank you, Board Member Musgrove. All right. Is the vote okay or do we need to revote?
If you would do the vote again, just so it's crystal clear which one that we were approving. Thanks.
Thank you, Member Insco.
Aye.
Member Acosta.
Aye.
Member Musgrove.
Aye.
And Chair Becker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for that clarification. All right. So we were talking about some future requests. Hello, I forgot about you guys. They're back. We went ahead and finalized our new business and we voted to go ahead and approve the credit agreement. And so we are all, we are on board member request for future agenda items. And I suggested that we'll put on there to nominate a vice chair.
Yeah, I agree that we have to have that on our next agenda.
Okay, and I think it might be time to talk about the chair of our citizens advisory committee as well at that time. I'm not sure if you, it was a two year or three year. Maybe board member Warden knows that, but if not, we should probably put that on.
I don't remember, but Barbara knows.
She'll, well, that would be one thing that we could do as well. I'm also noticing that we need to revise our documents to include Escondido and San Marcos down at the bottom of our agendas. Assuming it'll fit. And I'm so pleased that you were so quick in getting those backgrounds to them. So that's wonderful. All right. So anything else? Otherwise, we will be adjourned to our next board meeting. Oh, Board Member Musgrove?
Yes, Chair, thank you. At our last meeting, we discussed the the term of service for the chair and the vice chair. And I, I think we we agreed through acclamation that you would serve another year, but we, I, it might be prudent for us since we are bringing that up on the agenda to put that into our bylaws. So it's it's clear on the next process, exactly the term of service.
That's a great idea. Thank you so much. All right, I'm not sure. Do we lose Barbara or she's our CEO or she's just?
I'm here. I just turning off my video to stabilize my internet here.
I got you. Okay, so I think we're adjourned. Our next meeting, regular board meeting is January twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, and we will be virtually in the city of Carlsbad. That means get ready to lead the pledge of allegiance.
Sounds good. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Happy New Year, David.
Bye, everyone. Yes, Happy New Year.
Bye bye.